Check, check. Well, we're gonna go ahead and get the meeting started. I just want to thank everybody for coming out this evening. Hopefully, we won't have too long of a meeting or a long agenda, but we do have quite a bit on here. The first thing we want to do, definitely do, is the invocation and then the pledge, if everybody would stand.
Let us pray. Father God, Lord, we love you, we thank you, we praise you today. Father, we thank you for allowing us to be a part of our local government. And Father, we ask that you forgive us for where you fail you each and every day. Lead, guide, and direct us in everything that we do, for it's in your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll have the approval of the agenda, and I know we've got some amendments to the agenda. The first thing I would like to do, and I will need a motion, I guess, on this, I would like to actually strike number 14, and the reason why is I think we need a little bit more time to discuss this. I've had, and I think the board, really, I would think that the board ought to do this, I've had discussion with the mayors and community leaders in regards to tourism. A lot of our towns have scheduled events, and they have had, they have them scheduled out like a year in advance, and they would see an opportunity maybe for that funding or money to go toward those events to help them, to stabilize those events, and they would like to actually have a participate in a discussion or conversation with how we move forward in regards to this. So until we have further discussion with our community leaders and our mayors and those type people, I would actually like to get a motion to strike that until we have these discussions.
I'll give you a motion.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I got a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Ah.
Any opposed? Thank you all, and now let's turn it over to Steve for the amendment.
You could use a mic. Under presentations, we need to enter number two. Dora Martin is going to talk at Vet Fest, and under county administrator's request, I guess we'll make it 14 now, since 14 was tabled, a mutual aid agreement between Washington County and Russell County, to add those two items in.
Okay, we got a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Ah.
Any opposed? Thank you all. Okay, now, changes to new business, okay? Approval of the minutes, considered approval of the minutes of the following meeting of the Russell County Board of Presentations. I'm sorry, sorry, I skipped through that. First one is Diane Shorter, Russell County Registrar, Electoral Board Precinct, sorry. Come on up, please. Sorry about that, I skipped through there.
Good evening, everyone. I wanted to take this opportunity to provide some information and to make some announcements. Earlier this year, as we know, with the closure of Swords Creek and Copper Creek, well, that triggered a need to make adjustments to the polling places. At this point, we are less than three weeks away from early voting, and considering that there has been quite a bit of work that has already gone into place to make sure that we are ready for voting, the Electoral Board and I believe it is in everyone's best interest if any changes, any ordinance, any ordinance that needs to be enacted be done after this election to avoid any confusion with the voters, first of all, and second of all, to give the Department of Elections and our office enough time to notify the public and also to print the several thousand voter cards that need to go out to notify and mail out to notify those affected voters. The second issue that I wanted to address was I wanted to share, and unfortunately, I was not able to be here last meeting, I was traveling, but I wanted to share and provide a little bit of insight into what happened that prompted us looking at a polling place, assessing the current polling place, and then looking for a polling place for Cleveland. Back in April, as we were getting ready for this June primary, we learned that we no longer had access to the former town hall there in Cleveland. So we were without the former town hall, served as the backup to the main polling place, which is, of course, the community center. At that point, the Board and I got together and discussed to see what do we need to do. The Board reached out to Brett Edmonds and to Josh Tinson, and they met outside, they met at Cleveland to take a look at the polling place, to take a look at what the options were. So there was consideration as to where do we need to, what would be the emergency polling place, as well as considering what we have seen in the past with regards to weather and how it has affected the community center, if there is anything that we needed to do that, to address this. The Electoral Board and Josh looked at the fire hall and reached the conclusion that it would be a polling place, a building that would tick all the boxes of the code and the requirements of the Department of Elections. It would provide a facility that would make the polling place safe for all the voters and be secure for the equipment, and that is, of course, the utmost priority for the Electoral Board and I, that the voters and the election officers are safe and that the chances of a disruption to the election as a result of any weather events is kept at a minimum. That is, in fact, a requirement when the Electoral Board looks at polling places, it does need to take into consideration the risk and choose a polling place that minimizes the risk of fire flooding and so forth. We are aware, I am aware, that they are concerns, and I want to, I want to communicate to all the voters in Cleveland that we are aware that the community center has been the polling place, and we do take that into consideration. We also want to express that it's of utmost priority that the voters and the election officials are safe, that elections don't stop, it does not matter what we have going on that day, one way or another, an election has to take place, and holding it at the fire hall may minimize that risk, and that was the reasoning behind approaching you all and letting you know, we've got a situation, and we need to find out what would be the best solution for the voters of Cleveland. Is there any questions?
So you said that this was primarily because of a safety issue, right? And you said that the state has a certain standard. Can you explain to that, to us about that?
Right. There are certain requirements that are stipulated, first of all, primarily in the Code of Virginia, and second of all, the Department of Elections through the State Board of Elections establishes guidelines. So when we take all of that into consideration, the Electoral Board is responsible for selecting, for helping to, first of all, to assess potential polling places, and second of all, is required to let the local governing body know that there is a situation that needs to be addressed.
And you've, as long as you've been registrar, how many times has it flooded there?
I believe that it has flooded, and since I've been appointed, I believe twice, and I believe it was once prior to me being appointed. We have taken, there are ADAs, as you are aware, ADA requirements, so, and those, of course, are established by the Department of Justice, so we have taken not only the requirements of the State Board and the Virginia Code, but also other requirements, and it was determined by both Josh Tinson and the Electoral Board, which Josh has been great in making sure that the Electoral Board is able to assess these polling places that the fire hall would meet and exceed the requirements.
Diane, basically what you're telling us then is this upcoming election, all the old voting stations will be the same as they were last year?
Yes, I believe that is the best way to move forward.
Right, and we'll, and we'll address any new changes sometime after that.
Exactly, yes, yes. That is really the best way to go about it, given that we're so close to voting, and I understand that the election itself is not until November, but in reality, the election really does start once early voting begins. So there is quite a bit of work that has to, there's no way, like I said, elections cannot be postponed or delayed. We keep on running with everything that needs to be set in place for voting to begin, and of course, voting, whether it's early voting or voting on election day, it's the absolute, it's the same. These voters are casting a vote, and of course, they have to be given a ballot according to their precinct and so forth. And so everything needs to be in place with very few exceptions, with preparations and paperwork and so forth that deals strictly with the polling places on election day. There is quite a bit that already is ready and up and running by the time that early voting begins, and making any changes at this point, I would, I believe it's counterproductive, and it would not be of benefit to any of us involved, much more so to the voters.
We definitely don't want to make it confusing.
Absolutely not.
Do, I guess we need to take action as a board to leave it in, in place currently. Is that, is that correct? We haven't changed anything?
Diane, Diane, are you, y'all gonna release from the Electoral Board out into the papers, the voting precincts and what? Yeah, can, not working, okay. There we go. Can you hear me? Oh, there we go. I had my help. There we go. Are you gonna release a public statement into the newspapers of the precincts and the locations, just to make sure everybody's on the same page?
I would certainly do that.
Okay, if you don't care, just that way.
Yeah, thank you.
Reiterate.
And if you don't care, if you want to release a post, we'll also post that on our website and kick it out under us, too. That way, everybody's aware that reads the hard copy or the soft copy.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, yes, ma'am.
Right.
Thank you so much.
Yes, and that's, that's what I think with all the voters, especially as elections become news, as we start moving into this election, just minimizing any confusion that can, that may trip, you know, voters, and may, that they may not know where they vote or how to vote, or even the times. So any changes whatsoever that we can hold off until we wrap up this election, and that way, we have sufficient time to, for you all to finalize the ordinance and make whatever changes you deem necessary, and once that happens, of course, the Department of Elections has work that they need to do with the ordinance that you provide, and then that comes back to me, and we have to make preparations on our end.
When would you suggest that we work on that ordinance? First of the year, December?
At least December, no sooner than December.
Okay. Can we, can we plan on having that on our agenda and just, that'd give you plenty of time to do what you need to do next year, so that...
Exactly.
Okay, so our emergency precinct is no longer available. So what do we do if, God forbid, we have another Helene or something like that right now, because that is not available, but we still are voting at the community center, and obviously, that could potentially be horrible. Do we have the fire hall now? Is that something we need to make an ordinance for as a, as an emergency place right now? Like, what would you do, I guess?
The Board of Supervisors is the only governing body that can establish the, of course, the precincts. As far as the emergency polling places, that is up to the Electoral Board.
Okay, so you're good on that? We don't have to do anything?
Y'all do not have to do anything with regards to the emergency locations.
I just wanted to make sure, you know, given this year has been insane with weather.
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, we've already done so many states of emergency.
Right, and that is one of the, who knows if, you know, what happened last fall with having, we were already doing early voting when the hurricane hit, and there has been, there has been so many weather events, both locally and nationwide, that simply, again, our utmost priority is make sure that, yes, an election needs to take place, but let's do it in a way that minimizes the chance of anything happening to any of our voters. Absolutely.
I just want to say thanks to you and the board for the work that you do, kind of looking forward to see, to take those types of actions, because we need to be proactive, not reactive.
Yes.
We never know, I mean, nobody ever anticipated the kind of weather events and stuff that we would be impacted by, so.
Right.
I agree. Thank you.
Absolutely. Yeah, we really appreciate you coming, and I was gonna ask really quick, it's a little off-topic, you haven't gotten a deputy registrar yet, correct?
No, no.
Okay.
I will say, it has been challenging. The current pay of the deputy is less than what the position paid six years ago, so that has created a challenge, not only to attract qualified, qualified, a qualified person, but also to retain them.
Absolutely, I mean, I would, I would wager to bet that surrounding counties are probably, what, 18 to 20 an hour for that position?
Correct.
So, and we're significantly lower than that?
Yes.
I really think that that's something we need to look at, Mr. Lester, is that something that we can make happen for her pretty soon? Because she's gonna need some help for the election, and if we don't have qualified, I mean, what if she, God forbid, gets sick, gets in an accident, something like that? We really need to take some action on that, I think, so that she gets some help in there. And then, you know, we don't want something like that to happen, and then here we are on the news because we can't handle an election.
Right, well, and then it's also important to point out that the code establishes that the deputy has to have the same qualifications, so has to be able to run the office in case something happens, and I'm very, very fortunate and blessed that this past November election, I did not get sick, I did not have anything happen to me, and I had a number of really wonderful election officers that rolled their sleeves and helped with the election without having a proper deputy in place, but we do need to address that, and whenever we do attract a qualified candidate, candidates certainly, to be able to retain that person here in the county.
Yeah, you can't do that if you don't pay, absolutely, and I mean, you're one sickness or accidental way, and we can't have the volunteers basically running the election.
Right, right. We are currently in a situation where we do not have a backup, and the case of the GR, the deputy, or something happening to either one of us, there has to be a backup there at least to help for that particular election, and I believe you and I had briefly discussed it, but it is absolutely in our best interest to make sure that there is someone there, apart from the general registrar and the deputy, to serve during that timeframe and serve as backup, in case one of us is out, in case one individual, you know, decides to leave, and it has happened, thankfully, it has not happened in this county, but there have been other counties where they either lose the general registrar or their deputy once the election is well underway, and there has to be someone that is trained and that is able to provide support to whomever is left there, whether it's the general registrar or the deputy.
So what's your, what's your pay rate now?
Thirteen dollars and ninety cents.
So you're needing five to seven dollars an hour?
That's the average for a position of this kind, and the information that we provided earlier this year, there is a comparison, I did research, both in the private and the government sector, and that is, and based on feedback that I've received from individuals that would be qualified, that would otherwise accept the position, it, it's about eighteen to twenty dollars.
Well, and I can tell you all, I have worked in the registrar's office under Linda Newberry, and it is a very demanding job, there's a lot to it, a lot more than most people understand, and so it's, I mean, really, to give somebody about a dollar more than minimum wage is, I mean, it's a lot of responsibility, isn't it, Diana? A lot.
It's very demanding, especially because elections, and it's a little difficult, and I understand that, I did not know half of what I know now before I started working at the Elections Office, but there is a significant amount of work that goes into play before a person can even receive a ballot, and that was the case five, 10 years ago, but since 2020, there has been a complete, certain number of laws that went into effect that in some instances completely transformed the way we run elections now.
So this, this is a full-time position?
The deputy is full-time.
So I've done some quick math here, and roughly, that would be about $10,000 plus benefits, if you add benefits in there, you know, you're looking at about 14, maybe 15,000, depending on health insurance, basically. So your budget that we provided you this year doesn't allow for that roughly 10,000 to 15,000 dollars?
Correct.
Okay.
Now, like I said, there was, there is quite a bit of information that I sent out earlier this year, and I would appreciate, sincerely appreciate feedback and wanting to hear, okay, what is it that we can do, and how do we go about solving this problem? It is a problem, there is, there are, we're not the only locality, of course, I so wish that money grew on trees, and I understand that, and I know that there are other localities that run into similar issues, but unfortunately, with regards to population, comparing localities that of, that are similar to us, we are the lowest paid, and again, it's, we have staff that has gone to work at other counties. That's another of my concerns, because we have wonderful people, I have met really great people since I've moved, moved here, and it's especially the younger generation that I've seen that we've lost, either as election officers or our former deputy, that leave the county for jobs, and it would be absolutely fantastic if we could offer a competitive pay so that they could stay here.
Yeah, now, you've been without a deputy registrar, at least through last election?
Last July, in July's when...
So, so over a year?
Yes.
Wow, okay. It's a long time to go without that.
It is, very much so.
And, yeah, and you're getting ready to get into another election?
Right.
So potentially two elections with no true help.
Right.
Thank you for what you do.
Thank you so much.
I know it's, I know it's tough.
Thank you.
But we really need to fix that, y'all. We really do.
Any, anything from any other board? Thank you.
Thank you, Diane. Don't get sick.
Okay, the next presentation we have is Dora with Vet Fest.
Hello, everybody. I'm sorry, I'm just coming now to y'all. I should have been here last October, but y'all were super busy, and I didn't want to interfere with any of that, but last year for Vet Fest, and at the end of September, you guys helped us out with a beautiful donation. You guys always come and, and come through and help us out. Also, we had the veterans breakfast on Monday at the fair, and Nate and the sheriff and Katie were there and helped serve the veterans.
Zach.
And Zach, I apologize, Zach was there, too. It was, I was, it was very overwhelming for me, and you all know, I always build close to the water, so, because it's very, very close, and I get emotional, but I do appreciate you all very, very much, the ones that came out and helped us, and you all for supporting us. I have a flag for you all, I hope you hang it. It has a couple of stains, because we hung it up at Vet Fest last year, so it has already flown. A lot of, a lot of people who came have seen it, of course, our Vet Fest last year was the day after Helene did, we still went ahead and did it, because we felt that in all that chaos, people needed a silver lining, and the people who came were, were happy that we did it. So we will have, again, Vet Fest this year on September 27th, so we're four weeks, four weeks out, so we're excited about that. It's gonna be at the town park in Lebanon. We're gonna invite, we want to invite everybody. If I can talk just a little bit about our organization, we are now, Vet Fest Southwest Virginia is now its own nonprofit organization, we have separated from fallen warriors. They have gone into a direction that we just didn't want to, it was better that we parted ways, and they do their thing, we do ours. We still do what we believe in, raise awareness and raise funds for stop sort of suicide. We have since expanded a little bit, we have started helping veterans that can't with lawn care, with little bit of jobs around the house, stuff like that, and we hope that next year, when we're a little more up and running, because we had to start from scratch, and y'all know, starting a nonprofit costs money, so we hope that we can expand that a little bit. We have one gentleman here that he, he was in the hospital for three months, and all this time, our group went and cut the grass and helped his wife, and we did what we could to make everything livable for him to come home. So it's just the little change we went through, we don't want to change through what we do for the community. Vet Fest is gonna be, I think, great again, we're gonna have our 5K, our 12K, we're gonna have inflatables for the kids, pedal cars, all kinds of stuff. Bring y'all, bring your kids out, bring your families out, there's gonna be food, canine presentation, pet show, so something for everybody, and again, I want to thank you all very much for supporting us, I hope you keep supporting us, and I wanted to give you that flag, and I hope you kind of find a nice spot to hang it and remember us.
Should wait till...
Thank you, Dora.
Oh, that is nice. Stand up here, and we'll get a picture.
If y'all want to.
Okay. County Administrator, I guess, have we allocated those funds to support Vet Fest, or is that something that a motion needs to be made on? to support Vet Fest, or is that something that a motion needs to be made on?
Uh, Chairman, I'll need to check. I'll need to check.
Is that something that we need to take action on this, or is it already in the budget?
I need to check.
Okay. I'll give you a few minutes to check on that.
You go ahead and check, and if you don't, we'll come around back to it.
Okay, all right, because we definitely want to support Dora and what she does for our veterans. I'd like to get with you again. I know that I started that health forum for the veterans, and it got moved to Abingdon, but, uh, over there to the higher ed. But I'd like to meet with you again on that. That was a very good initiative, and we, we, uh, got with Ballot Health, and they came in and pretty much put it on for us.
Y'all have my contact information.
Thank you. Thank you for what you do. That's the reason that we live in a great country. I love your shirt, USA. That's the reason we have the freedoms we do is because of our veterans, and we're grateful. And we're grateful for anybody that does the work to help our veterans, no doubt. We'll come back to that, I'm sure we'll, uh-
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Go ahead. Um, one thing I talked to, um, a couple people about, um, on Monday morning, um, absent from the Veterans Breakfast was the Fallen Warriors wall, um, that we made a donation to, uh, them to have that. A section of Russell County added to, and it was sorely missed. Um, that's a Fairgrounds event, um, and it would be nice to see them there. Um, I, I would like to see us as a board draft a letter and just say, hey, we, we really appreciate what y'all do, and, but we would like to see you participate in that event, especially because we made a donation to have that. And I think it's something that, that would be nice to have, especially for, um, those veterans that do show up for that event, to have that, to see their fallen brothers, um, especially for Russell County, to have that there at that event. I think it's important, but, uh, I don't know if that needs to be a resolution or a motion or whatever, but-
Can you draft a letter and send it?
Uh, just add on what Mr. Kaiser was elaborating on. I pulled up the budget. Y'all had donated, like he stated, five thousand dollars in '22 to the Fallen Warriors donation. Since then, uh, Fallen Warriors and Vet, Vet, Vet Fest has separated, you know, their, their programs together. So we do not have a line item into the donations for the Vet Fest.
It's still there for the Wounded Warriors.
It was, but due to, you know, the separation and the other issues, probably the, what Vet, Vet Fest had, there was no appropriations by the board of any type to either Fallen Warriors or the Vet Fest. That's at the board's discretion. The only one I got to the Fallen Warriors is, is the five thousand appropriation, you know?
That was to do with the wall.
That was due to the wall. That is correct. That's correct.
That was not their yearly event. How much will you, did we give for your yearly event?
Uh, we did that on a random appropriation. I think it was five hundred. Yes, yeah.
Then I'll make a motion. We give them five hundred dollars for this year.
Oh, second.
Can we have a motion and a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Uh-uh.
Any opposed? Thank you all so much.
So, Mr. Chairman, do we need to make a motion to write the letter, or?
Yes, that's a separate one.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, I would.
Make a motion, we just draft a, a letter to them, just ask them, or make the request for next year's fair that we have that, uh, show up.
Can we have a motion and a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Uh-uh.
Any opposed? Thank you all. Thank you, Mr. Kaiser. It's definitely needed. That would be good to have that down there.
It's important, man.
Okay, moving on. Now, we got the approval of the minutes. Consider approval of the minutes of the following meeting of the Russell County Board of Supervisors.
Mr. Chairman, I've got two amendments to that.
Okay, sir.
All right. Hang on a second, let me get to them. Uh, let's see, under the county attorney reports and requests, um, I'm listed as a nay vote on the, uh, real estate tax exemption. Um, that should have me in an affirmative vote as a, a, not a nay. And then also under requests for the declaration emergency resolutions, got me as an abstain. But I'm not sure why. That should be an aye vote as well.
Thank you, Mr. Kaiser, for bringing that to our attention. Taking those two, is that the only two you have, sir?
That's it, sir.
Okay. Uh, taking those two under considerations, those need to be changed as na- as yes votes, not nay votes. So, uh, do we have a motion to approve the minutes with those considerations?
Motion.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Uh-uh.
Any opposed? Thank you all so much. Okay, the second line item is the approval of expenditures. Consider approval of expenditures presented for payment. I need a motion?
I'll make a motion. We approve the expenditures as presented.
Pay the bills.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Uh-uh.
Any opposed? Okay, now we have, uh, thank you all for that. We have committee appointments. Uh, the Russell County Library Board, I will let you guys know that, uh, Ms. Van Dyke, Sharon Van Dyke, has expressed to me that with her busy schedule, she no longer wants to be on the Russell County Library Board. Um, I want to thank Sharon for all of her work and what she's been able to do. And I understand she's got a lot of irons in the fire, and she's, uh, really busy serving on the town council and plus her job and all that. So, uh, I don't really have anyone at this time to appoint to that position. Uh, I guess we're Sherrons in my district, but, uh, we can take action, I guess, on the others at this time.
Should we point these individually, or can we do it as a block?
Uh, Tyler, can we do it as a block or individually? Individually?
I would do individually to be safe.
Thank you, sir. Individually.
I'll make a motion. We reappoint Judy Ashbrook.
Okay, we're having a, uh, motion to appoint Judy Ashbrook. Do we have a-
Second.
Got a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Uh-uh.
Any opposed? Second one up, I guess, is Karen Davis.
I'll make a point. We reappoint her as well.
All right, got a motion?
Second.
Got a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Uh-uh.
Any opposed? Sharon Sargent?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to appoint, um, Sharon Sargent. She is out of District Two.
Okay.
She hasn't given me any indication that she was not interested, so I'm going to ask for her reappointment place.
Thank you, ma'am. I got a second. Uh, any discussion? All in favor?
Uh-uh.
Any opposed? Thank you all so much. Uh, and I'll, we'll put Sharon on hold unless, uh, the library board has any recommendations. Uh, we can check with them as far as anybody else that, that would be interested in serving on that board. Just let us know. Uh, citizens comment period. All right, the first one on the list is Donnie Tackett. Come on up, sir. Just tell us your name and address, please.
Uh, my name is Donnie Tackett. I live at 183 Creek Side Drive. And that leads me into the, uh, reason I'm here. Um, about three years ago, I met with VDOT and county staff to discuss the roadway section in that area, which is part of Seneca Garden Estates. It's a last section, which is about twelve hundred feet, that wasn't paved or taken over for maintenance. And I'm here to request, and my neighbors has shown that concern too, that could we get that in a, in a maintenance plan or within the, uh, roadway system? It, uh, it, I was here about three years ago to discuss the same thing.
All right, uh, this is not a answer, uh, question or answer?
Sir, this is a presentation for me.
Yeah, I understand.
Okay. So there's-
County Administrator, would you take that? To VDOT, please?
Well, I can address it. It's in my district.
That's fine, go ahead, ma'am.
And I know, because I've brought this to them several times, numerous times. It was two pieces of property, and as it was sold, this is my explanation from VDOT, is one side gave a right of way to have the road, the other side did not. So there's something about having a legal right of way on that section of road. From the gate at Elk Garden, coming in and going out, and then coming up the hill and coming out, I have been there numerous times with VDOT, and I've had them, engineers, both of them tell me, because of the way the land was sold, the right of way, unless the folks that live there bring it up to state standard, then we, they can't do anything.
Only thing I'm requesting is twelve hundred feet within Seneca, Elk Garden Estates. The right of way is there, the drainage systems are there. And, and I met with them, and they, they said it would meet all the requirements, and county staff, that would meet all the requirements. The following year, they said it would be selected in the next year going to construction. And you were about three years into it. It's, it's a hill, twelve hundred feet, and during Helene, everyone from Mile Rock, Elk Garden Road, Elk Garden Road, they used it to come through there, which, that was fine. We maintained it. And during flooding of Cedar Creek this year, the residents had to go through there too.
Yeah.
We're just asking for twelve hundred feet, not the whole thing. We have, it's in the right of way of Seneca Garden Estates. It's all dedicated. And, and they were familiar with that too. That's all we're asking for, just twelve hundred feet.
I'll go back and ask them again for you.
Okay. I'll, I'll see what- Is, is anyone I could talk to at VDOT also, if it would help?
Well, uh, Ms. Di, you know, she'd been out there too. We've both been there together. Uh, one of the issues for it, and it's, and it's, it's, it's one of the barriers, like Ms. Di had explained, to get the easement all the way through. If I, we go down twelve hundred linear feet, it's only capturing, what, two houses? See, that's the problem, and VDOT, three, maybe three. Yeah, you're down there to the gate.
Two or three more fronts. It lots of fronts.
Now, you and I met down there, V, with VDOT.
Yes.
Ms. Di and us, and VDOT had met down there on the other end with the property owners. So that was before the pandemic. If, if Ms. Di throws pleasure, she would-
I'll go back.
Go back. Things have changed over quite a few years, so.
Yeah, I'll go back. I'll, I'll go down there one day, when my-
Okay, please call me. I, I can be available. And, and other residents also, they, they just wonder why there's a black sheep that live in development. It's all paved except for twelve hundred feet. We'd just like to have that part of it done, or some sort of maintenance program. It doesn't have to be paved. It could be anything to help, help the residents out wherever one uses it.
Uh, I've got your email address. Did you put your phone number on to the sign-on?
Here, I'll give it to you.
Um, Ms. Diane, I will, will make arrangements.
Yeah, because I've been there, so I'll come back. I'll go back again and look with you.
Okay, Ms. Di, thank you. And thank you, Mr. Lester.
You're welcome. Thank you, sir, for coming. Thank you. Uh, Jennifer Chumley?
Good evening, guys. How are y'all? Hopefully good. All right. I'm coming to fuss about the polling location. I was mayor for six years. As far as I'm aware, there's one instance that the building was flooded during my mayorship, that we used the backup location, which is still available until it's leased out. Um, it will be leased out, but currently it is not leased out. Will be leased out. Um, only one instance in the past ten years that I'm aware of that stopped voting and actually moved voting to a different backup location. I have FOIA'd for that information, so we'll see what that shows. Um, I'm concerned that the fire hall sits on a one-lane bridge that cannot safely handle two-way traffic between voters and emergency responders. Congestion could delay fire trucks leaving the town hall, and as far as I know, we're also helping daint at this current time. The emergency vehicles moving quickly during a call could conflict with voters and parked cars. And I have made y'all each a copy of this. It is absolutely a one-lane. Uh, Virginia law requires Vir- forty-foot buffer for campaign people that are there, as far as I'm aware. And there's a narrow entryway and the bridge, and I think it would be very congested if you have a lot of campaign tents or, and/or tables set up. Uh, the accessibility issues are still there. I don't know. Uh, machine security is definitely an issue. And furthermore, as far as I'm aware, Mayor Linda Couch and Brett Edmonds, as of today, thinks that this was still going to be a backup location at the fire hall, not even a primary location. That's what Brett wrote on my post today. Um, the residential road leading to the fire hall includes slow kids-at-play signs, high-lane local safety risk. Um, I just, I think that it would be a good backup location, but as far as a primary location, I, I don't think so. And I think one of the issues that comes up, and, um, I think it was said last time, is that the, the, um, building smells. And I think I've got down to the bottom of that. What it is, is the water. We have sulfur water in Cleveland. It tests perfectly fine, but up in Tank Hollow, it is a sulfur well. I mean, i- it is. And when it sits in that water heater, it does smell. And I think an inline water heater at that location would be a definite way to prevent that, because it sits until, you know, the chlorine eventually evaporates in it. And, you know, you've got, you've got that smell, and you do have to flush that water there. So that's the only thing I can think of that would be a smell from the community center. Other than that, I mean, it's, it's a really nice community center. Um, but I understand that we're not looking at it right now, so I'll just give you these to hand out to everybody.
Okay.
Also, and we'll look at it later.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that's the last one I had on my list. Uh, I'm gonna go ahead and move forward. Constitutional officer reports and requests. Have anybody here seeing that? Okay, county attorney reports and requests.
Uh, thank, yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, the first one I have is the solid waste disposal ordinance contract that we discussed last month. Um, so at last month's meeting, we discussed getting the Attorney General's opinion on the compliance with the Virginia Code of that statute. Um, that letter requesting the Attorney General's opinion has been drafted. Um, so still waiting a response on that. Um, the second thing up that I have is the, the given school transfer. Um, that is still in the works, and we have some, some questions as far as the, uh, the procedure of the transfer. So that is still in the works, um, but we're making progress on it. Um, next one I have up is the transfer of the Red Bud House in Honeacre. Um, I've spoken with April Moorefield. Uh, that deed is prepared and ready to be executed. Um, just waiting on her signature and then execution through the board and the county attorney's office. Um, fourth, I have the Pure Salmon Project. There was a change order executed, um, so part of Russell County's agreement in the, uh, the resource agreement for Pure Salmon is to take care of the road construction. So a change order was issued and executed, um, to really push forward and to expand the, uh, the necessary expenditures with Thompson and Litten to move forward with the road construction for that project. And then finally, the only thing I have that requires a board action is the solar projects that have been proposed. So we have two that are in the negotiation phase. Uh, one through, uh, Commonwealth Energy Partners, CEP, um, and then another one through New Leaf Energy. So both of those would need to be set for a public hearing. Um, and I would need a motion from a board member to set that, you know, maybe for the October board meeting.
Thank you, Tyler. Okay, do we have a motion to set that public hearing?
And I would divide those two up, uh, Mr. Chairman, if, if I may.
Okay, divide CEP and?
Y- yes, have separate motions, one for CEP, one for New Leaf.
On the same October meeting? Is that correct?
Same year. Yes, if that's the way the board would like to go.
Okay, I'll need two separate motions, one for CEP on the public hearing.
Yeah, one, one is a community project and one is a commercial, so that's why we wanted to divide it.
And the CEP is the one-
Commercial.
Commercial.
Commercial. In Rivickis District.
Yes.
Energy.
So, Mr. Chair, I'll offer you a motion tonight for, uh, public hearing. Number one, I guess, on the same day as we're looking at for Commonwealth, is it Energy Pro- what's their, what's CEP?
Commonwealth Energy Partners.
Partners, thank you. Commonwealth Energy Partners.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Uh.
Any opposed? Thank you all. Thank you all. And the next one is New Leaf. I'll need a motion to, on the public hearing for this one also.
Okay, so I'll go again. Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we have a, a public hearing for New Leaf Energy on the same day as CEP.
All right.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Thank you all. Is that all you have, Mr. Tyler?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you so much, Tyler. County Administrator reports and requests.
Thank you, Chairman. First on the county administrator reports, of course, is the Russell County Road Report System. I asked the board members to review those for the ones that's in your district and ones that's applicable to VDOT system roads or the private roads. The second one is the VDOT monthly road system report. As, as you, as we have looked, the board, the VDOT has requested two board actions. The first is to publish the proposed abandonment of Route 784, which is already being done. We had sent, we sent those publications to VDOT, so that has been performed. The second one is what's on the agenda for tonight, the abandonment resolution of Route 721, and I'll get into that later. Next.
Mr. Chair, if I may interrupt. The road reporting, I noticed that two was coming out of Dainte for District Two.
Yes, ma'am.
And that was due to air, air flooding problem.
Yes, ma'am.
Now, that's a little different than what we've normally seen, so I'm going to put you on the spot. Did you go down there and look at that area at Union Church where the Raznicks can't get in their driveway?
Yes, ma'am. And, and that's going to have to be addressed. These, these two reports that came through Dainte, we knew that they're the flooding. We've also had it on our emergency management punch list, so it's going to have to be addressed at that one, especially it involves VDOT, the railroad and the, the repair and maintenance to the property so they can, you know, egress out and ingress for the property owners. But those are the ones that we will be addressing.
Do you have a, I'm sorry, Andrew. Do you have a timeline on that?
We got it. We are right now looking and one of Mr. Hensley's questions was, you know, he, he tagged me on the, excuse me, the United Way funds. We may be able to use those. Jared is taking a look at that to see if the scope, he's talking with them to see if we can utilize those funds because it, at the surface, it looks like it will meet the scope to be able to utilize those funds in that, what they have donated to us. So we're looking at these pieces of property. Ones that we have done through Helene, the ice storm, the flood, good God, it's, it's three, three, three events here. The United Way was dedicated to Helene. Now, was that, that's one of the scopes of the United Way grant, so we have to look at that to make sure it stays within the scope. Was it what portion that was destroyed during the flood of February, what was destroyed in the flood of Helene? So that's going to take a three approach because VDOT had already put it on the radar of their section during Helene. So railroad is what we're trying to do, so we're trying to get all three of us together at the same time and we'll take a look at that. If we do, we got the funding available.
You can correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Lester, but isn't it 48 hours that VDOT has to see when this is reported through the reporting system? They lay eyes on it with, well, maybe it's two working days. It wouldn't be on a weekend maybe. Is that correct?
That I'll have to verify because when they come in through my staff, they forward them, you know, onto the VDOT. We have to look at them first because I get a lot of private roads and VDOT at first didn't know what to do with them. They just send them back and say, private, private. So let me, let me confirm that with you. If not, we can make it as fa, we move them as fast as that we can through to them. And we also do it, I know for 100%, after the board's meeting, y'all take a look at them, we move them to VDOT.
Yeah, that's what I was going to ask Lonzo because I know from reading these, these are concerns. I've been by both of these places that are talking that are in my district. They are, it's drain pipes. The ditches need to be cleaned. So are they, or how quickly are they getting to these? Because there is a need. Both of these are stopped up.
And see, right now on VDOT, you know, they're, and I'm, I'm not standing up for them, but you know, they, there's, they took on Buchanan County and they took on, you know, two big floods and a hurricane, so. So the February flood, the Dainte flood and the hurricane.
These are kind of Corps of Engineers problems too.
Yes, they are.
So where, are you, are you the contact with the Corps of Engineers that says?
Jared is working, Jared, Jared is working, him and Jess is working with Army Corps of Engineers into the Dainte area. You know, the one that we have, the slope failure that's on, on the property behind the Dainte fire rescue. So we'll reach out to make sure that, now, on that one at the railroad, you know, just from the VDOT train, you know, railroad owns everything in their property in its world. It's just the way, it's the way it works. So even VDOT won't encroach upon, on the railroad, but we'll get with you on that one to make sure it's on top of the priority list. And Mr. Eaton also, he had some culverts and pipes into the Miller Creek area that we're looking at too, so. But of the ones from Helene, the ones that we're currently doing, the ones from the flood and the recent Dainte, we, of all the ones that we got, they're narrowing the list down to a very narrow punch list. So we're trying to get them assistance and Mr. Andrew, Mr. Hensley, he had, he had concerns about the farmers and the fence, so we've reached out to those guys and getting them in, you know, getting ready, you know, and, and touching base with them. So they're going back through their punch list.
One of the things that, one of the things we really need to address, and I have on a consistent basis, and I've talked to you and we've talked to VDOT, is the brush cutting and the mowing. The trees that are actually hovering over the roads and scratching people's vehicles and stuff like that. I mean, that's got to be done.
Yeah, when we were, we also talked to the, the state about the, these waterways, especially the creeks, the debris is in them so much now that any flood is backing everything up. I mean, it's, it's not just from AEP cutting the trees. I'm going to throw that out there and AEP's listening here. But they leave them laying, that's the bad thing. It's just like when they went into Dainte, you know, they, they left stuff laying. So these things are, have to be cleaned up, but you know, the railways are going to have to be cleaned. But I'll tell you what, I'll get with both Jess and Jared. We'll get an updated list to show y'all in what area and districts that we're still lack, you know, lacking in. Some of the things that we have though, either FEMA, estate funding, or the USDA, or the United Way, you don't fall into none of them. You've got to be very cautious of, you know, with the way we move these things because it's private property. That's one of the key things. And of course, you know, the county's working with, you know, a lot of nonprofits and, you know, donations and, and you know, that's, the nonprofits are doing that and they are taking care of a lot of it. I got to say that. They're, they're helping as much as they can, but with ours and our funding, we got to be very specific within the scope of the grants, be very cautious, and it takes time. It does. Look at Buchanan County, good God, they're, they're going on three years and then now they already had another one. So I don't know what, what was from the first flood or the second flood.
So one more thing, if I may, Mr. Chair. I, I did have an opportunity to speak with the governor's office and they're looking at some relief funds that may be able to cross over onto private lands. And they were going to be talking with Dickerson County and Russell.
Russell County. I got the email today. How'd you know that?
I talked to the governor's office. And the governor.
And I got, I got an email from the governor's staff.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Just keep us up on, on that.
And that may be one of the projects that we have to move to on that one.
Yeah, please, please do keep us updated on that because I have, I have some issues in my district.
Yeah, and, and back to the Dainte, the Cleveland Community Center, which we had damage on too. We, we brought in the insurance, that was flooded during the February flood, which has been fully repaired and restored. So it's, everything in it's mostly new.
This would be a good opportunity for me to ask Ms. Rebecca Diatta. She had asked me earlier, and I'll let her ask the question, but about the, where we stand on the generators.
How they've been installed? Where are they?
The, the last time when I talked to Brady that's, that's going around with them and insured, we're up to, if Ms. Quote me, seven right now, or seven in place. Seven.
Well, she had a good point. I mean, we're a year in.
I'll get that for you too.
Yeah, if you could provide that.
I will provide that.
If they could provide.
I won't even wait till the next board meeting to say that. I'll get that to you tomorrow.
Well, if they could provide us a timeline, and that way, I know Ms. Rebecca gets calls and other people gets calls and Tara's got calls, everybody gets calls about, you know, when we, when we bring these things out and we really don't have a timeline of construction or implication of the, of the generators. We need to actually know that so we can tell our constituents.
I will do.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. And that, and that will lead me into the county project activity list that's next on mine from the VDOTs. We're finishing up the, we finished up the Commonwealth Attorney. We've, again, the Cleveland Community Center has been completely remodeled and our last things are going in. I think they've got the ice machine in. That reminds me, on the ice machine down at, that was taken care of.
Don't forget about me, Lonzo.
It's already, it's already on the punch list, yes, sir. The Swords Creek Community Center is complete, this 911, the canries have done. The in-progress is the generators. The, the installation is in progress, but, so I'll give you a definite number on that one. I apologize. The Court Services Division is the last component of the remodel of the old courthouse that was not in the original plans, that we're moving them from the basement. They got up to the adjacent to the district circuit courtroom where Ann used to sit, the circuit court clerk, and they are taking it over there. They, we had to do some paint, community workers come in and we refitted it to do everything. We're also have hunted them down furniture, so we're, are almost done with that and hopefully done within the next week. The Castlewood Community Center is, the roof has got to be replaced. The library, the materials are there. I know that's over there and they started into that. And HVAC unit units, they're for the government center, they have been ordered, they're huge and it takes a while to get those, so that's negative too. Next on the county administrator reports is the DQ, oh, well, the PSA project list and of course, you know, the Belfast Phase Three generators, the Tiller Trail Court, take a look through it, Milton's Bottom Sewer Line and Stray Hollow. The, the Nash's Ford, the Clinch Mountain and the Dainte flooding, which is the big one. So as you'll see, that's an updated report on that one too. Next is the no deficiency letter, as said, the Russell County landfill by Department of Environmental Quality. As it states, there's no deficiencies within the solid waste permit number 258. Next on the county administrator reports is the 2025 VACO Virginia Association of Counties Achievement Award for the Russell County Work Program. Of the 200 and plus applications, Russell County received the Virginia Association of Counties Achievement Awards and for their community work program, that was the, what we utilize in the work programs to send them out to the regional jail. They are, have an opportunity to, you know, work within the community to, to, in part of that, as part of our recovery. So Judge Moore and Zach Stutes and Judge Patton, that program, of course, the leader of it and the program director, Mrs. Carter, does a wonderful job. They also received the state award. We talked to the Virginia Association of Counties Executive Director today, David and I, and he will be presenting that at the November Board of Supervisors meeting in person, and they will be here on November the 3rd, yes, to present that. But congratulations to Mrs. Carter and her crew on this. And I was just going to read just some highlights from it because a lot of times we get so busy that we don't get a, you don't tell our own story. So in our application that was awarded, which we said was, was going to work hard to get, Russell County Community Work Program has saved $3,183,090 in jail costs from July of 2016 to October of 2024. Additionally, in the same period, $5,587,084 that community service has been performed for the Russell, Russell County citizens for a total of $8.7 million in savings since 2016. That's why they won the award. It's amazing what they do. So next on the county administrator reports, again, they will be here on November the 3rd. VACO will be here in person presenting the award to the community and with this, there'll be, all the judges will be in attendance and we may have to discuss moving the, the meeting to the conference.
I told Lonzo, we probably need to move our meeting in November down to the larger room.
Because they're inviting some of the attendees.
Because they might bring a, a lot of people, I'm sure.
Next on the county administrator is on the county administrator request. As mentioned before in the VDOT report, this is the V, I need a motion for the VDOT and DCR, the Department of Conservation and Recreation, request for roadway abandonment of Route 721, State Park Road, access to the Pinnacle Area Reserve. So I need a motion for the no intent to abandon this section of Route 721 that's in your packet. And I'll bring it up.
That's that last little piece of road past the gate.
Yeah, yeah, I'm, I'm, let me get to the mile pile.
Yeah, so that is the, the river section that's not even used anyway.
That's great.
Right.
Yes, that's, that washes out. That's great. Has not been utilized in 20 years, so. 20 years.
I'll make a motion, we grant that request for abandonment. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you all.
Okay, next is, next on the county administrator request is the countywide forensic audit request for proposals. This is at the request of the Board of Supervisors. This is for a countywide audit for an RFP to be released. I need a motion for the Russell County Countywide Forensic Audit, Audit.
Mr. Lester, does this include the edits that I submitted?
It is online with your edits, sir.
Okay, all right. So what's in our package and all?
That's correct, and the one I sent out to y'all individually yesterday is included.
Excellent.
Okay.
I'll make a motion.
I'll take it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I, I got some discussion. Could we possibly move that report date to March 31st? Because we always set the tax rate in April. And if that gets brought in in April and anything comes up in that audit, and we've already set the tax rate, the treasurer might already, I'm just thinking maybe we could find something in the audit that would affect the tax rate.
It's at the discretion of the board.
That wouldn't cause an issue with anything?
I think your, your thinking on that was that it's kind of a confined timeline for the auditor anyway, right?
Yeah, it is. Six month, what I gave was a six-month window. That's, you know.
If a, if a timeline won't allow for it, I mean, that, that just is what it is. I was just mildly thought of that.
One of the things I want to ask the committee, next time you guys meet, is we need to figure out how we're going to pay for it.
Gee, thanks.
So I need y'all to actually be looking at that because it could have a huge impact financially on the county, so next time you guys meet, that needs to be kind of priority. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Abstention.
Okay, we have one abstention.
Abstention.
Abstention also.
Got two abstentions.
Back in June.
And Mr. Chair, if you might, if you would allow me, I don't know if your vote is carried or not, but at this time I want to say publicly that my decision to abstain is twofold. The motion in June regarding the budget's adoption included a stipulation for a forensic audit. I was strongly opposed to the rate, and I believe that adding the audit stipulation on top of the rate was inappropriate. Therefore, my abstention was a protest of the limited choices of the voting process itself. The citizens of Russell County does not deserve the tax rate that was imposed on them, nor do they deserve the additional burden of the audit stipulation of untold cost tied to this tax rate. Therefore, my abstention stands.
Thank you, Ms. Wallace.
And Mr. Chairman, if I may, just recommend we do a hand raise or a roll call vote of some sort on this, just to clarify the vote.
Okay. All in favor, raise your hand. And the abstentions? Thank you all. Okay, Mr. Lester? Okay. Next on the county administrator request is the National Opiate Settlement Payments. There is four payments that's there for $56,912. Not to go through these individually. $56,912.67, $16,633.70, $16,361.16, and $33,383.31. I need a motion for all four payments for appropriation allocation into the National Opiate Settlement Payments. Who's going to go first?
Tyler, do you want us to do all these at once, or can we do this because it's all the payment at once?
I would do each one separately.
Okay. I'll, I'll make a motion for that first one, $56,912.67.
Thank you, Ms. Di. I got, Ms. Di, Ms. Di. Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The next one, $16,633.70.
I'll make that motion again.
Second.
And we got a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? There wasn't no need to say discussion, okay. $16,361.16.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? $33,383.31.
I'll make that motion again.
Thank you.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you all so much. And the reason that Tyler wanted to do separately, from separate funders, so, and we have to appropriate each one.
Thank you.
Yes. The next one is another award, a grand award to, what we was just talking about as part of the Community Work Program. This is the Virginia Supreme Court Grand Award for $70,859.70. This is to the Russell County Recovery Court. I need a motion for $70,859.70 for allocations appropriations.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you all. Next is the Town of Lebanon's request. The Town of Lebanon has a request-
Skip one, Lonzo. Number 10.
Yeah, the Town of Lebanon.
Bristol Region.
Number 10 is casino money.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Don't want to lose that one. Wait a minute. That's the big money. Sorry about that. I'm sorry. Bristol District Regional Improvement Commission Casino Funds for $941,860. A motion.
Motion to accept.
I turned the page and it kicked.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
That showed up, didn't it? Everybody knew what the casino money was.
How's that track right now, Lonzo, with last year?
That is 140 approximately $1,000 more than we received last year. And hopefully it will go up again next year. Now, the Town of Lebanon request for the Virginia Department of Fire Program Risk Assessment Study. I hope you all have had an opportunity to look at it, and this is just a expert excerpt from the Town of Lebanon. The Town of Lebanon recently commissioned the fire services study. One of the key recommendations of that study was for Russell County to request a community risk assessment study through the Department, the Virginia Department of Fire Programs. The study would provide valuable data and guidance to strengthen fire service planning, identify areas of risk, and enhance the county's ability to support all voluntary departments. This, also, the last component, it's free, so.
Well, I noticed, Lonzo, one of those letters in there was from 21. Do they need to update that, or is that, does that have any bearing?
Oh, you talking about from the Town of Lebanon? Yes. They, it were, it will, the county is the primary governing board, so we will be assessing the whole county. So, what they've done in their, the letter, the original, our letter will be the standing letter in the application.
The other one has 26 on it.
Do what?
The other letter has eight, 22, 26 on it.
26.
So, so other than a little housekeeping on that, my question is, the municipality is the town and the county is separate. So, do we just support that for them? That doesn't mean we're tied to this if, if it comes down to financial bearings at all. Is that correct?
The governing board is not required. This is an assessment. That is at y'all's discretion. You can take it as any assessment, whether it's fire services or rescue services or public safety services. You are the governing board. You can implement what you need or what you think that is a risk assessment to the county. You can also implement ones that you do think that will work. It's an assessment. It's not an all or nothing proposal. You see what I'm saying? So y'all are the governing board. Now, if the Town of Lebanon wants to go forward, they have that right the same way as the Town of Honaker, the Town of Cleveland, or St. Paul.
But this assessment will be inclusive of?
The whole county.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
How's this paid for?
It's free.
Free. That's silly.
It's free. Okay, do we need a motion? Yes, ma'am.
Only?
Yes, sir.
Easy now.
I was looking, I was looking at Lou.
Okay, I'll need a motion on that.
I'll give you a motion.
Thank you, Ms. Wallace.
I'll give you a second.
You got a second? Any discussion? Further discussion on it? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you all. Okay, let me get to the next one. The next one on the county administrator request is the Lebanon Food Pantry Donation Request. That's before you. As they said, they currently serve 465 families since January the 1st. And they have in their, your board packet, they have put in their programs and what all their expenses are. So that's at discretion of the board supervisors.
How many food pantries do we have in the county?
You have four that's officially, you know, certified nonprofit.
Four.
Yes, four. Yes. That is Word of Victory, Elk Garden, Lebanon Community, and Woody Scott. Yes.
I couldn't see doing one without the other. Yeah.
I'm with you.
I'm with you. All ready for me to make that motion?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. I make a motion that we give each of these, Lonzo, 500. Is that okay? Do we have that? It's fine for all of them?
I'm okay with taking care of our neighbors, but, but we need to utilize our churches that are trying to figure out how to help people. And if our churches could come up with this, rather than everybody always coming back to Uncle Sam, I, I think that we are under utilizing somebody that is ready and willing to help, and that's our churches of our community.
They are the churches. Most of those food banks are, aren't they? The Roger Jesse is.
But they're individual churches.
Hang on, just a second.
I'll make a second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Now discussion. Go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you-
Oh, that's okay. Yeah, it's okay. We got a motion and a second.
But you're right, Andrew. Most of our churches, we are blessed with that, are very good to help their neighbors. And anybody has a fire, they're always right there to help in the community, anything that's needed. And, and all these, Word of Victory, the Castlewood, Elk Garden, they are, they're churches.
I know, I know with Lebanon Food Pantry, Grace Wood is donating to them a lot. And, you know, a lot of the other churches that you're talking about, if, if they want a place to donate, we've got four great places for food, don't we? So.
This, I'm going to bring this up. I brought it up to Lonzo earlier today. I don't, you know, a lot of them, I don't know where they're getting their food. I know some of them are certified through USDA, but if we did the food vouchers and based on the $500 and made it a requirement they had to purchase food within the county, some of them are going outside the county to purchase the food, to bring it in to give it away. But if they purchased it within the county with the food vouchers like we do the turkeys and hams, the tax base rolls right back to us if, if that's-
That's 1% correct.
1%. I just wanted to bring that up. I mean, it was just an idea I had to do-
Money spent in the county.
All the money has to be spent in the county.
But, but the county gets 1% of that back.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. If you did the, the food vouchers, like we do the turkeys and hams during Christmas, it actually specifies on there that we, we partner with our local grocery chains here within the area to support that event. And they usually give us a pretty big discount to work with them. So, and I don't know where they're accumulating all their food and getting the food. I've heard they go to Sam's and-
How do we do that? Do we need to change our motion?
Well, I just wanted to bring that to everybody's attention. I think you're not just writing them a check, but you're making it, you're supporting our local businesses as well to help support the people in need. So, if you want to, if you want to go that route, yeah, you probably need to change the motion to do the food vouchers instead of just a check, so.
I can change my motion to say that when we give these food pantries, that they have to purchase the food within, the groceries within the county. I'll change that.
Do I have a second?
Second to change.
Got a second? Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Abstention.
Same, abstention.
Okay, we have two abstentions.
That's good. Okay.
I vote yes. Okay. Next on there is the Russell County Combined Search and Rescue Donation Request. Of course, you know, we did get the boat in for the Cleveland. It's, it's really nice. And we'll get, we'll send y'all a picture of it. But I want to put Mr. Bryant on the spot since he's in the audience with the Sheriff's Department about the combined search and rescue, what the current status is on this, on the donations, have, working out way that we're going to proceed and work in conjunction with the Sheriff's Department, fire departments, and the search and rescue. Thank you, Mr. Bryant. I had no meaning to put you on the spot.
That's okay. Thank you. Good evening. They had a combined search and rescue team meeting recently. They had a few members there. I think their bank balance currently is 400 and some dollars. So they're not very financially stable at this time. Darrell Beavers is actually running that team. He's the, I guess, appointed captain by the Board of Directors for it. Some things are kind of up in the air. We're trying to have a Board of Directors meeting, so I'm not sure what direction things are going to go. There's been some conversations about it, but to give you definitive plans or ideas, I'm not sure the direction they're heading right now. They have a few volunteers. They're working on some training. They sent some people to Rescue College for training back in June, but financially, they're not really good right now, I don't think.
So what would you recommend to the board?
I will put you on the spot again.
I would, my recommendation would be table it until their Board of Directors meets and see what they come back to you with after that. And I'm on that board. I don't mind to come back to you once they get together. But they haven't had a Board of Directors meeting sometime.
I'll make a motion that we table this until we can find out something further about their financial situation.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Mr. Hansley, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you all for what you're doing. Thank you, Mr. Bryant. Last thing on the county administrator request is the Russell County, Washington County Sheriff's Department, again, the mutual aid agreement. I need a motion for approval on it.
Motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Got a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you all. Chairman, that concludes the county administrator reports and requests.
Okay, I'll start with Andrew. You got any, anything, Andrew?
We got, myself and Mr. Eaton went and met with a prospective buyer of one of the properties. It's been discussed here over the past month or so. And there's somebody else that's come forward. We really hadn't got anywhere with that. That's, that's a business. That's, that's local. And it would bring a few jobs in and would be really good for our community. And just be in prayer for that, that maybe, maybe we can hit on something. And, and I do believe it would be good for our community. Hopefully, in the next couple of weeks, we can all get together with that, that company and meet with them, look at everything, and hopefully that'll work out for everybody involved, the taxpayer, the county, and, and the company as well. And that's, that's all I had, just-
You let me know when you need me.
Not, not this way. I got too much going on. I told him I'll touch base next week. So, first of the week, hopefully I can touch base with him.
All right, thank you. Ms. Wallace?
Yes, I do have a few things, if you don't mind. Number one, I do want to say that to Mr. Hansley's point, the church does show up. And I can totally attest to that with several people that have been in my community that have absolutely shown up and have given. When the government doesn't come, the church does. So I just say it's all in his good, good timing.
Amen.
Thank you very much.
Amen to that. Okay.
I would just like to encourage anybody who can donate to these food pantries to donate, because we do have a big need in this county. We have a lot of people that are struggling, you know, paycheck to paycheck, and just trying to feed their families and live. So, if you can at all, please support that and be in prayer for everybody up here that we make good decisions and serve you all well, so.
Thank you. Okay, Steve?
I'll, I'll copy Tara. You need to be in prayer for this board supervisors, that we do make the proper decisions and the right decisions. Prayer never hurt anything. Other than that, I'll just pass.
Okay. Ms. Rebecca?
No, I was going to ask about the generators, so if you'll let us know, because our folks in our communities are, you know, we're getting bad weather, hurricanes coming, water, we never know what's going to happen. And I'll ditto what they said about the food banks. We do need to help our neighbor. We never know what's going to happen.
Okay, Mr. Kaiser?
I'll ditto that again. Definitely if you are able, if you have an extra $5 in your pocket, go donate it to a food bank. It'll help a lot of people, a lot further than you might think. So, I know I will be going by Lebanon Food Pantry and making a donation myself. So I encourage the rest of the board members to do the same, and any of those of you in the audience that can do that. More prayer to you. If we all pitch in a little, it'll help a lot.
Good same.
Good same.
And then usually I don't add anything on. Just to chime in on what the attorney said on the pure salmon, that change order didn't change the money at all. That was a change in scope for an additional acre of land for DQ to be able to prove it to move forward as a green space. So, there was no change in, in the money.
Thank you.
Thank you. The only thing I, I've got really is, we went to the VACO conference, Ms. Wallace and myself and county administrator, and made a lot of headway, I think, made a lot of communication and contacts. There was, we had some speakers that came, Jason Manárez, and talking about policing and, you know, the things that he's working on to try to make sure that our police and our officers are well protected. I was really impressed with his speech there at the VACO conference. I just want to let everybody know-
I just want to let everybody know that, uh, we do have people that are actually looking out for the, the people that wear the blue, blue, green uniforms, I say, but, uh, I do appreciate that. Also, uh, I want to give kudos to Mr. Lester and Missy, both the ones that actually sat down and prepared the, um, document that went to VACO, where we actually won the award. Uh, I told Lonzo, uh, we've, there's been so many good and great things that's took place within, uh, our county that we probably need to put in more applications to, to VACO. There's been a lot of, uh, talk about certain different programs that's been adapted here within the county that have made a huge impact, not just locally, but regionally, and also that got back to the governor's office and to the state. Uh, one of the things that Ms. Wallace had brought up too is, eventually down the road here, I think there's gonna have to be some recognition of all the people that really worked the event, some of the churches that Ms. Wallace had spoke on, uh, that I know she's been in, in communications with on a consistent basis. Pastor Jeff Kinder, uh, is now part of the emergency management, uh, program that we have established, uh, within the county that includes different pastors, and if you have a pastor or you have a church representative that wants to participate, please let us know. Let us know, cause when these activities take place, it takes a village of people to try to help those in need. And I was really impressed, uh, with all the surrounding counties that came out, uh, and our sheriff's office, uh, there was people's lives that were saved during that flood that, uh, we recognized them while they were there, but I think down, down the road here, we need to get a list, Ms. Wallace and county administrator, all those people that participated and, and done those things, so we can actually acknowledge them. I don't want to do that openly, cause I know if I do, I'm gonna leave somebody out, so I don't want to do that. But I think that's something that we really need, uh, to look at as far as showing our appreciation for what they did. I'll do, I will tell you this, the Cle- Cleveland Rescue Squad personnel that risked their life, uh, got into the water and saved, uh, the lady's life. It was just so touching to, to know that we have people that are willing to risk their life to save others, and I'm telling you, it's, it's just overwhelming. Uh, and I will tell you this, our, our own county administrator was in waistwa- waist deep water, uh, helping save a life. And, uh, with Bryant Skeens, him and Bryant was together, and Bryant told me, said, I don't know of any other county administrator in the region that would get into the water and, uh, risk their life to try to help save others' lives. So, I just want to say thank you, and, uh, if we can get this together, uh, I'm sure that, and I don't want to leave anybody out, so we'll just have to make sure that it's a complete listing of all those. Belfast, the same way. Uh, Ms. Di had a, a very horrible flood that came in, into the Belfast area, and they had to rescue people and get them out of their home. So, we don't want to leave any, I, I, I really messed up the last time and failed to miss, mention every disaster that we had took place. But, look, we live in a great county. I mean, we live in a blessed county, that's what me and Andrew was talking about earlier.